Live on YouTube. Welcome to Free Council Mobile Alabama.
Okay, we'll be live in just a minute.
And we're live now.
I've got a photo of the phone that's uh in the meeting if you can hear.
Hey, um what did he say?
Do you think it unmute it to hear them down there?
I don't know. So I unmute them where? Who is it?
Who?
No, I have who it is.
Mr. President, are you ready?
Uh I am. Uh good morning to everyone. It's uh. Are we ready?
Yes.
Uh good morning to all of my colleagues and the man and the staff. We will turn it over to our very capable city clerk.
This is the pre-meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, May 19th. We have approval of minutes from May 12th.
Good job.
Outstanding job as always.
Ditto.
Essential COVID-19 items held over 34012 ordinance to amend the city's business license code to exempt persons offering parking space on private property within a one-mile radius of Lad People Stadium from obtaining a business license.
I would like to ask uh. Mr. Aldridge has disseminated the latest version of this particular ordinance uh that has taken into account all of the feedback we received from our members of the council. Um it's specific to areas essentially in my council district. Areas A affected by uh Mardi Gras and and activities associated with Mardi Gras. And then also uh the area that's already impacted or that's already covered under an ordinance, which is last stadium. But if Mr. Aldridge, if you could, if you could briefly go over uh the various tenants of this ordinance and then if you have any questions, uh he can address them at that time.
Yes, or the lad uh. The part about lad was already on there, but we added uh. But previously it only said football games. And so we also added sporting events, special events or concerts uh in case they change the scope of what's going on down there.
Right.
And then also uh. Previously it had said, you know, parking in the pretty much the whole city. Um and it it's just been scaled down to be within a one-mile radius of any parade route and only on days when there are Mardi Gras parade schedules. Um and then we do the clarification that this exemption, if you there's other city laws about parking, so if you follow this exemption, you you're not violating any of those other laws. And that's basically the change.
Do are are there any questions because I'm hopeful that we'll be able to uh move forward to get on this particular ordinance today. Any questions of Mr. Aldridge, I'm a relative to this ordinance. That's that's great. Uh thank you uh Chris. I appreciate you all. Ma'am City Clerk?
Seventeen zero one three ordinance to amend chapter seventeen of the city code to approve the new flood map as required by FEMA to maintain participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. Zero one three four two authorize an inter-agency agreement with Alabama Department of Human Resources for funding for summer youth employment. Zero eight three four three approved purchase order to send some equipment for a street sweeper. Zero eight three four four approved purchase order to CDW Government LLC for backup recovery appliance. Twenty one three four five authorized three-year service contract with Cone for elevators and escalators service and preventative maintenance at various city of Mobile locations. Twenty one three four six authorized contract with Goodwood Mills and K Wood for Langham Park Drainage Repair Playground Area. Twenty one three four seven authorized one-year service contract with Mall Contracting doing business as Advanced Service Plus Plumbing Company for plumbing services at various city of Philly. Twenty one three four eight authorized contract with Shaw Contract Flooring Services doing business as Shaw Sports Turf for Herndon Sage Park Synthetic Turf Athletic Fields Maintenance. Twenty five three four nine grant to East Alabama Power Company to remove guy wires and install poles in Tricentennial Park and replace poles in the Shadow Gate subdivision. Thirty one three five zero author authorized fiscal year twenty assistance to firefighters grant program COVID-19 supplemental ten percent match. Thirty one three five one authorized fiscal year twenty nineteen fire prevention and safety grant five percent match. Thirty one three five two authorized grant application to the J L Betso Foundation for National Maritime Museum, no match. Essential COVID-19 items. Twenty one three five four authorized contract with Alabama Power Company to upgrade streetlights to LED lighting. Twenty one three five five authorized contract with C Thornton for engineering services twenty nineteen miscellaneous drainage repairs, group D Lake Circle and Princeton Woods Drainage Improvement. Twenty one three five six authorized three-year service contract with Johnson Controls Fire Protection LP for fire extinguisher inspection, servicing and maintenance at various city of Mobile facilities. Total contract is seventy-four thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars. Thirty one three five seven authorized grant application to the Department of Justice for the Justice and Mental Health Collaboration Program, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, no match. Thirty one three five eight authorized grant application to the State of Alabama Restore Act for implementation of the innovating St. Louis Street Mobile Technology Corridor of five million eight hundred eighty-five thousand dollars.
Wow, what is it? Is there a match on that?
Um it doesn't say that there's a match.
And and what exactly does it involve? And didn't we do somewhere on St. Louis?
Yes ma'am. Oh yes.
Hi, everybody. Morning. Um there is no match associated with this, but there was capital of funds that were contributed to it several years ago that fed into the thirty percent designs that are already complete. Um so this money will complete the design um for that and the construction of the project. And this is our first um sub-award agreement for our Restore Act projects that are coming into the city.
Now Jennifer Green.
So so this money is just for a design?
It's for design and construction.
Design and construction?
Yes, sir.
So what?
Mr. Richardson, they will come to Ms. Rich.
Thank you.
Well, uh can give us the scope of the work with this?
So the first piece will be the completion of the design. So right now we have thirty percent design plans for the project. So the first step will be the RFQ going out to complete the hundred percent design plans. That will take approximately six months. And then the remainder of the funds is to do the construction of the project. And that will start in the first quarter of next year. I'm sorry, second quarter of next year.
And and Jen Tom briefing with the scope of the construct of of what the project involves.
So it's a utility project, so civil infrastructure project. So it's the utility upgrades on St. Louis as well as the street design.
So so very similar to the Broad Street, but just on a smaller scale for St. Louis. Much some of St. Louis has already been upgraded. This will be doing the the remainder of it, but tearing up effectively not quite block by block, but a couple of blocks at a time to go down and do all the utilities, curbs and new new street surface.
All right, okay.
And and I just want to to remind my colleagues that uh we had to invest three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken, of district CIP funds to in order to leverage getting these other resources. And so I'm hopeful that that we'll be able to move forward with this item.
Okay, I have some questions.
With Rich?
I know that uh and and Mr. Delap made reference to it about St. Louis being already some of it repaired and and renewed, so to speak. So what section is this contract under? And again, this is Restore Act, so that's the BP money settlement. Do I have that correct?
Correct, yep, this is BP money. This is bucket one funds. So we originally applied for this money in twenty seventeen and it was approved. And there's quite a long process to gain access to the funds. And that's what we've been working on for the last eight months. So there's been a review process with the Treasury and DNR. Um we submitted the full proposal in August of last year. That's been going through their review and we've answered all their questions and gone back and forth. And now we have the sub-award agreement. We got the notice of award three weeks ago.
Oh.
Just to just to add on to that real quick. So number one, uh I have to thank Jen Green, who's been briefing you on this uh for her hard work to push this through. Getting any of these restore projects fully through the processes has been a very long process, as you know, since twenty seventeen when we initially applied. We have two, I think, two more that will be coming very quickly here uh because of her uh pushing these through. Back to the scope of work, it's effectively from uh um the two streets, the end streets. Nick, you could probably correct me, I know Nick's on the line. Um but it's the main stretch down St. Louis. Um and they'll effectively do from uh if the sidewalk has not been already repaired, they'll do into the sidewalk. If the sidewalk and curb has already been redone, they won't do that stretch. But it'll be from right there at the street's edge where the the whole street will come up, do new utilities. And if they haven't repaired the sidewalks and everything in the certain stretches, they'll do that as well. And and the other P. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
From water to broad.
Well, it's effectively from uh from the court, new courthouse to broad, that's correct. And there'll be a Mars, there'll be a Mars component in it as well. Mars will be financially participating uh for for their share of their water and sewer lines as well.
Thank you, Nick.
Where were the funds for the first repairs to St. Louis? How how were those funds put together? Was that also part of Restore earlier?
No, that was, those were individual, those were individual projects, TIF projects and other projects that were done um just as as went along. And some private business owners went ahead and, you know, repaired sidewalks when they did their own refurbishment.
They were required to. They were required to, I think.
That's right.
Yeah.
Let Nick weigh in on some of, Nick, can you weigh in on some of that, some of those projects?
Yes, sir. Well, you know, what what started, I mean, and this started probably five or six years ago. Uh St. Louis Street was just in horrible condition. And we literally went down there and just did a resurfacing project and striping. And that kind of set off or helped to set to complement the private development that was coming in for renovating all of the historic buildings. So as as the historic buildings came online, you got a lot of private investment plus TIF investment that helped to uh rebuild entire blocks or or most time in most every instance, it was an entire block of street that was done. So that's, as we mentioned, past work. If you if you drive down there today, you'll see entire blocks that had been completely rebuilt. We won't, we won't tear that out and rebuild it. We will tie to those sections and match a similar streetscape as we go through. But as all those buildings were coming back online, you went from a scenario where you had empty buildings with no utilities effectively being used to bringing back on hundreds, if not thousands, of people, be it businesses or residential. And so the utilities, the water and the sewer, um of course, needed to be update updated to accommodate that. And then because the initial project was only resurfacing, it never addressed the underlying infrastructure that was there. So this project is doing is doing both, um you know, to to address all those needs.
You have to resurface again with part of that?
Yeah.
You do if you're now going into the utility?
That that's part of what will come out of the design, whether or not um, you know, it will be a complete, get the old concrete out from underneath the street, which we likely, which we'll likely try to do, or if there's some balance in in between there. Uh you know, the design, thirty percent really just kind of gets you to a concept. Uh because we've left the the Broad Street project, we have a good idea of what the unit prices will be. Uh ideally, we will get all the concrete out of there. It'll be a complete street rebuild with a final resurfacing. In 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 one scenario, it might be that we have to leave some of it in place and then just patch and resurface over the top of it. But the aspirational goal is to get the concrete out.
Build build asphalt.
That's correct. Yeah, the final product will be asphalt like you see today. It's just what's what's out there is an underlying concrete uh road that really never intended to have asphalt on top of it. So it makes the gutter lines not be as deep as they should be. It affects the drainage to some degree. Uh it affects the ability to get into the utilities uh because you're having to go through concrete in addition to asphalt. Uh so again, there's still, you know, a good bit of design work uh to be done. But because the buildings are already there, you know, there won't be great, great sweeping changes to it. I mean, basically, the footprint that you see will be what the footprint is today with, you know, minor changes to to affect, improve some functionality.
Any other questions relative to this particular item? Uh thank you, thank you, Jen Green, Nick Amberger and everyone that has worked uh so hard to to get this to the point of uh being able to be voted on. Thank you all so much. Uh Ma'am City Clerk?
Appeals um appeal of Bus Jordan on behalf of Cabana Royal four oh one Dolphin Street concerning the Planning Commission's denial of their application for planning approval to allow an occupancy load of over one hundred in the downtown development district.
Yeah, any anyone would like to offer any commentary? You don't necessarily have to, but you certainly have that ability. Uh thank you.
Uh Mr. President, I mean, uh I don't know how we uh how we say this nicely, but you know, we heard all the arguments last last week and through the throughout the week. I've had conversations with both sides and we've we've completely heard this. And everybody's welcome to, you know, to weigh in all over again. I don't um I don't know that we can hear more uh useful information. And I just, I just asked everybody if if it was said last week and let's let's leave it to last week in our memories, unless there are specific questions. You know, you know how to do that better than most, to ask them to be short and nice.
I I'll certainly do that. Uh Mr. Williams, I agree with you. We have heard uh from everybody, from the Archbishop on down relative to this item. And so uh I know I have, it's just pretty much been eating and breathing and sleeping it the last three days. And so uh uh we'll be mindful of that at at ten thirty, Mr. Williams. Ma'am City Clerk?
Uh best to try to say something.
Oh, I I didn't know it. Come, come on, uh uh best Rich.
Uh machine is on.
Hey, thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Um I I'll wait for when we're in to the um for the record as far as talking about arbitrary and capricious, since that's really what they are you know, saying their appeal is based on. And I did not speak, I listened to everything. I too have heard from uh both sides and digested everything we've been given, the letters we've been given on this item. And um I I do contend um being a member of the Planning Commission and your representation, all of yours um on the on the commission, that the board was not arbitrary or capricious in their action. It was very deliberate, very rational. And um I'll just go on and articulate that for the record on behalf of the Planning Commission and what what transpired. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Um we have requests uh for waiver of the noise ordinance on May twenty-third and uh twenty-fourth on Racine Avenue and on Gentilly Drive North from two PM until ten PM. These are in District Seven.
Those are fine.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. We have one person um that has submitted uh presentation, which is Reggie Hill. You also have copies of that. Ordinance is held over fifty zero one four. Ordinance to amend chapter fifty of the city code to add a new article entitled Mobile Tourism Improvement District relating to the creation of a self-help business district.
And ditto on that uh ordinance. We've heard it, we know it. I think that um David and his folks will probably be there as well as Spike and Margot. But um when um they'll just hold it to our questions. I think we'll get as much information as we need on that. Uh just just trying to, there's a lot to cover. Also, was there another noise ordinance on night or the shore or on the Shore Drive that from Mr. Robinson? Do you, does anybody know?
Yes, yes. I I we received it. I'm gonna put it on the agenda next week.
Okay.
It's not till June.
Okay, okay, very well, thank you. Pardon me.
Resolutions held over forty-two hundred, declare the structure at five nineteen Patton Avenue a public nuisance and order it demolished.
I I don't have any objections.
Okay, uh announcements.
Are there any announcements from members of the council?
Yeah, Mr. President, Madam Clerk. We talked last week about uh coming back downtown next week. Is that still the plan?
Uh what what is this still our plan, members of the council? Uh Mr. Mr. Williams, are you uh prepared to come back downtown?
Hey, I'd come right now if y'all want to go.
Uh Ms. Rich?
I'm fine with that.
Mr. Dave's?
I have, will not be able to attend a meeting downtown next week.
Uh Mr. Richardson?
I'll be there.
Uh Mrs. Gregory?
Yes, I'll be there.
Mr. Vice President?
I'm like, yeah, four minutes.
Say say that again?
I'm like John, I can be there in four minutes.
Oh, okay, well, then that that intends to be our plan then, yes, ma'am.
I, Mr. Mr. President, I don't want, I certainly um I'm certainly not trying to indicate that the council should not meet downtown because I can't. I've got some uh, I I've just got a situation that forbids me from meeting downtown next week.
Yes, sir.
Uh where is that confirmation of the executive order? I thought we were gonna see that today. Chris, you?
It's on your email. It hadn't made it to the official agenda yet. If y'all want to uh chat about it, it can be added.
We should probably add it, don't you think?
Yeah, we should add it.
I don't have an objection.
Well, Mr. But is this not sponsored by the mayor? I I think the mayor should speak. It's 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 it's.
Oh, I don't, I don't disagree with you, Mr. Richardson, uh uh Mr. Mass Simpson, uh uh one of uh his appointees. Is someone ready to?
Mass Simpson need to speak.
Yes, um I'm really looking, stepped on another and see where Ricardo was. He had the ball, uh but we would definitely like to get it introduced. Um and we've worked on it for several days. We uh worked on it. I know that Ricardo and Chris worked on it to make sure that it was in alignment. And the idea is, is that should we need, well, it was all done in an effort to make it easier for our restaurants to be able to set up in the rights of way or on other city pop property. Uh you know, it's one of those things that um we really thought when we started the process that there would be a kind of a hue and craft art. It may not quite be uh that pronounced right now, but we still think it is a need that would help them. And having the ability to do that so that we cut through some of the red tape would just make it uh help expedite their situation.
Mass Simpson, yes. Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson and then Mr. Williams?
Yes, yesterday, um well, a couple of days ago, uh I wrote and identified a half a block on Glory York Avenue um that had litter on both sides. And in in the section I identified, there was no house in that section. The right away was not in front of a house. And uh I asked, uh that the city sent someone out there to get the litter. So I got a response back from uh Mr. Peeve saying, can you ask some citizens to go out there and pick it up? Of course, I didn't like that at all. And I asked him, is that gonna be the city's parcel all over the city and every neighborhood? Or is this germane to different one? But but that that ain't the part, I got another letter from, I stayed with him this morning. And I said that it's on the city's right of way and the city need to pick it up. He said the city does not own the right of way. So based on what you were saying, you you let the let the merchants uh set up on the city's right of way, I called him Mr. Peeve, we don't have a right of way.
Um I'm not gonna get into the debate of what was said by by Mr. Peeve. I'll let Mr. Delap uh get with John and sort that out. And so we'll handle that. And of course, the right of ways that we're talking about really have to do with the downtown area. And maybe you talk, are you talking about the downtown area?
No, but we're not, I'm saying John is claiming we don't have a city right of way anywhere. That the right of way belongs to the public and they need to go out there and keep it clean. It's what he he's saying, that that if the city start picking up on the right of way, then uh the citizens gonna feel they can throw down whenever they get ready. We, I said, it would be so dirty that you would even recognize if we went down, if we went down that road. So I I disagree, I disagree with him on that. And uh that I've been told that the the right of way belongs to the city. If if it belongs to the citizens, uh it's such thing they can't do in the right of way. And it's spelled out in the law. So if it belongs to me, I ought to be able to do anything I want to in the right of way. It's the city's right of way.
Well, I'd rather engage in that conversation at a later time, uh Mr. Richardson. We'll find out what uh Mr. Peeve was referring to and we'll get back to you. I think Flo has just walked into the main room. And so she will be able to tell you from a legal standpoint, you know, why we approached this from this manner, uh trying to help our restaurant uh restaurateurs. So Flo?
Yes, absolutely, thank you. Uh the uh May eight order of the uh state health officer allowed restaurants to reopen, but with restrictions, they were, that the tables had to be six feet apart and they could only have eight people at a table. So that automatically reduced the seating capacity for all restaurants, bars, breweries, everything. And uh the feedback to the city was that that was going to decrease profitability for all of those businesses. So the city uh worked with the restaurants and bars in that community to see how they could uh increase the seating capacity. And the ideas that uh were were uh landed on were to increase outdoor seating because that's safer. And the spaces that they're interested in are the sidewalk areas in front of the downtown restaurants, the metered parking spaces in front of the downtown restaurants and for restaurants that have their own dedicated parking lots uh to have uh to uh use some of those parking spaces, maybe if they want to put up a tent in that area. And the and and you know, the idea is to just replace the restricted indoor seating with additional outdoor seating.
Yeah, uh Mr. President.
Mr. Williams?
I had, I had two, two questions and um one was, is this already being done? That's that's number one. And 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 number two, um I I heard the the mayor said it and Flo said it twice, downtown. Um I don't read that in any of the documents that I received and that the word.
I don't either.
Um because there are some hurting restaurants that are small in uh in size that need to go outside on sidewalks and into parking spaces as well. Um just want to make sure that, first of all, that we're not holding up anything if this doesn't pass today because it's already in effect and you've already told them they could do it. could do it. And secondly, does this apply citywide?
Okay, first question, yes, it applies citywide. And in the areas of the city where there are parking lots, instead of, instead of downtown street space and sidewalks, there's a special provision to talk about using part of the parking lot and decreasing the number of spaces that would otherwise be required under the zoning codes for the capacity on, of, on the inside of the restaurant. So yes, it applies, it applies statewide. Is this something that, that restaurants can already do? Not entirely. Some restaurants in the entertainment zone, you probably remember Councilman Williams in 2014, there was a little bit of back and forth with the ABC board about whether the restaurants in the entertainment zone could serve alcoholic beverages at the sidewalk tables. So those restaurants already have access to the sidewalk in front of them, but that is only in the entertainment zone.
My question is more specifically with the executive order that we're now being asked after the fact to, to approve. Did that not go out guidance to folks that they could do these things already? I don't want to hold anything up and do it in the question. Do we need to vote on this today?
The idea, I'm sorry, Mayor, if you want.
Is Matt in the other room?
Yes, come on, we haven't shared the, we have not shared the, the executive order with anyone yet. You indicated yesterday you wanted to wait for the city council's input before we distributed this, so it has not gone out.
I'll send that vote next week.
So nobody's seen this, nobody's seen this, John. We've not given people permission to do stuff. We have worked with them, talking to some of the restaurateurs almost every single day, you know, trying to develop this, but we've not given them permission to just go do, do anything without subject to y'all voting on this.
Okay.
I have a question too, after Gina.
Ms. Gregory and then Ms. Rich?
On this, John brought up whether this was citywide, and I'm happy to hear that it is citywide, but also the question about serving alcohol. Are they going to be able to serve alcohol if they set up outdoor dining or something under a tent if they are not downtown?
Yeah, yes. That's one of the purposes of the order and resolution is that it affords permission to the restaurants to use that space. And the policy of the ABC board is that the ABC license will extend to all the areas in which the restaurant or bar is allowed to serve. So part of the application process is that the restaurant or bar has to submit a site plan for the additional spaces they're using. And then by approving that site plan, that should give them authority to serve alcoholic beverages.
Okay, so they're gonna have to submit a site plan before they can start doing this?
Correct, that's part of the application.
Okay. And it's probably in there somewhere, but how long do you foresee this waiving of the permitting and all that sort of thing or doing this? How long do you foresee that happening? Is there a deadline or is this something that we are going to just do from here on out? I mean, what do you foresee?
It's timed to coincide with the state health officer's May 8 order, which currently expires May 22nd. I, I would be surprised if it wasn't extended, but as long as that order is in place, this policy will be in place. And, and the overarching concept is that it's replacing reduced inside seating capacity.
Okay.
Mr. President?
I, I think Ms. Rich wanted to.
Yes, thank you. I asked Chris about the size of the tents and it was a 10 by 10. Did I get that correct, Chris? Do you call?
There's a 10 by 10 exception, and then if you want to go bigger than that, you have to submit some sort of design or plan for that.
And you have, if you're in a parking lot, if you're in like a strip mall and you share parking, you have the consensus or agreement from the person that you share it with or the owner of the shopping center, is that part of the permitting? So there's, do I have that correct?
You do need permission from whoever owns the parking lot, yes. Or the landlord or.
Okay. And we probably want to look at going on and, and passing this because there's a lot of things that they have to get. I mean, the size of the tent. So if we can help them expand in a proper manner, I think that the association, all the entities that could see this would be benefiting and it would help our residents to also feel more comfortable going out to eat, which is really part of the climate that needs to be produced if the restaurant can indeed handle that additional, you know, placement outside and they have a good way to do it. So I, I would certainly go on with approving it as soon as possible instead of a first read. But I'll do whatever is the wish of the council.
The longer we wait, the longer they have to wait, so, you know.
Ms. President?
Ms. Rich?
Yes, I am, I'm concerned about the expiration date. Could, could we just say that it would expire when the state's May 8th order expired? And that would be a time certain?
That's what it does say.
That's what it says.
That's what it says.
And then, and then if it continues on, do we just automatically continue on?
Yes.
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 Mr. Preston?
Mr. Daves?
I think we ought to take it up today.
I don't have an objection at all. I know there are plenty of restaurateurs in my district that are ready to mobilize on this idea. And if, really if we wait and then the governor's order, you know, is rescinded, then we probably won't be in a need for it. So I'm all for moving forward today.
I was just thinking, this might be a thought. So since there is a cost for a tent, do you think we could give them a week afterwards to still be able to do that since they went to the expense instead of having to collapse that? Or just trying to think outside of the box, give them a little bit of leeway with the program? Not extended on ever, but.
I think we need to leave it alone. Let's go with what, what's proposed.
Madam Clerk, Mr. Vice President?
Yeah, I'm with Ms. Rich on that because if we don't know what the governor might say this week or next week, and, you know, for businesses to go and spend so much money and then, you know, the governor go ahead and release everything, you know, if possible, then they fund money. I mean, that's, that's a waste of money. I, I'd like to hear from the administration on their thoughts of, you know, possible extending like an extra week past the governor. They, because again, you know, we, you know, businesses have struggled and we don't want them to continue to get further down the hole than what they already are. But, you know, we here to make sure that they are comfortable and make sure they are making, you know, good revenue. But again, if, you know, the governor go ahead and it's, or it's Friday next week and, you know, typically they spend all this money, you know, they wasted some money, you know. So I would like to hear from the administration on that also, you know, if possible, how they feel about that.
We may want to go with a minimal.
Let's let Flo weigh in from a legal standpoint. I mean, from a legal standpoint, let's see what the answer would be and then I'll tell you what I think from a practical standpoint.
Yeah, I, you know, as I said, the concept is to allow outdoor space to replace the indoor space that is taken away from use by the order. However, you know, I, I think each, each restaurant's gonna have its own situation and, and I think that, I don't, I think that there's enough flexibility in the policy to address what, what may come along. And as you know, we've been surprised and on short deadlines all along the way.
I think the question is, Ms. Kessler, is whether or not from a legal standpoint, we have the ability to extend it beyond the governor's stay safe at home order? Can we, from a legal perspective, extend it one week past that timeframe?
Or two weeks.
Or two weeks. Or any point of time, because to be honest with you, I know there are residents in my district, the governor can say whatever she wants to say during her next order. And I'm, and it may go for me. There are many restaurants in my district that are so enclosed and the seating is such, they're all on top of each other until a lot of, a lot of persons won't feel comfortable just because the governor said it's open, feeling free to go and eat lunch, eat dinner in these restaurants unless you have this outside seating capability. So it may be that we, we need to have this in place for a while until we make some, some headway relative to this curve. The curve is not flattening, ladies and gentlemen, it's not. Mobile is still the hotbed. And we ought to treat it as a hotbed. And if we're gonna allow people to be outside, we have the ability to do it, then let's give them some time so that we can build some confidence amongst our citizenry relative to eating in these establishments.
Ms. President? Ms. President?
Yes, sir.
The only purpose, the only reason the mayor has this before us is that in the governor's order, there's a, there's a section there on distancing. And she is saying you ought to be six feet apart, this, that and the other. So these restaurants, we, we received no complaint from them before this pandemic hit us. Since pandemic hit us and they finally were able to open up, they only can let 15 or 20 people in there because they got to make space for distancing. If the governor removed the distancing clause and said, clause and said, go back to how it was before I issued any order, go back to normal. I don't see where the city need to come back and say, okay, take you back to normal. We're gonna let you be all over our sidewalks, we're gonna let you build this, that and the other, they going back to norm. They gonna be just like they were before anything happened. So I don't think we need, we making no plans to help them to do anything. They going back to what, what, what they were doing before anything happened. They got all of the room they always had.
What, what?
If they were outside, they can go whatever they was doing outside, they can go back out there and start doing it.
Levon, I could, you. Ms. Richardson, I, you know, I, I, I guess we just disagree because the governor is making her proclamations and issuing her edicts based off of the information she, she's receiving from all of her staff and this push nationally for us to go as if this pandemic is not a serious thing. There's this push to just rev the engine up, put the pedal to the metal and get the economic engine going as quickly as possible. And I'm saying that there are persons in my district, in your district, all over this city, who will listen to the governor say that it's time to open up, listen to the mayor say and anybody else say it's time to open up. But until I'm confident, I'm gonna be eating at home until I'm confident that persons in my district feel the same way. We have not made any headway as it relates to the flattening of the curve. So until we see some appreciable evidence that the curve is flattening, I think we need to arm our restaurateurs with whatever flexibility that's due them in order to A, be successful and B, provide some level of confidence and some level of trust amongst the people who will be, who we're engaged in business with them. It's not, it's not, the governor's proclamation isn't the be all end all because she can say tomorrow, open it up at 100%. I guarantee you, me and you won't be eating lunch in, in a bunch of these restaurants. Sitting all on top of folks coughing and sneezing on top of one another, I'm not doing. But if I have a choice outside where I can sit and enjoy, the wind is blowing, the, the sun is on my back, maybe I'll, I'll trust that. But I'm not going in a lot of these restaurants covered up like the pandemic has not occurred. And there are a lot of citizens across Mobile, you can open up 100% tomorrow, they're not going. And I don't blame them.
Mr. Preston?
Yeah, Mr. President?
Mr. Preston?
Ms. Gregory and then Mr. Daves? Ms. Gregory?
Oh, oh, sorry. Okay, thank you. Mr. President, I do agree with you, whether the governor opens up everything to go back to normal or not, we need to look at it from our perspective. You know, we as a city are giving these restaurants the ability to do something that they wouldn't ordinarily get to do. And we're doing it because we want to help them to get them reopened and doing business and also to give our citizens the opportunity to go to eat in these restaurants and feel more comfortable to go to eat. So to continue it on, I don't think is a bad thing. We might want to look at this and not have a date certain anywhere in there because if we have some sort of a date certain, then we have to come back and amend it, you know, as to whatever we want to do on that. But I, I think we need to allow these restaurants to do this for, you know, however long it takes them to get back up and operating and have people feel comfortable going to the restaurants. Now, initially, it's gonna be so hot, nobody will want to eat outside anyway. But, you know, at least for now, for the foreseeable future, I don't have a problem with doing this and continuing on.
Ms. Daves?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I think we ought to give them a little extra time. My, my suggestion would be that we give them a month after the governor opens everything up. We give them an extra month. I, I, I don't agree with not having a ending period to it because I, I think if you don't, if you, if you just have it open ended, then people get used to it and it'll be very difficult to go back and unwind it down the road. And everybody needs to understand going into it, it's temporary arrangement. People feel safe going back into restaurants. And so I, I would say a month and, and at, you know, as we get close to the end of that month, we can look at it again if we need to extend it. But I, I would hate to create the impression that this was gonna be the new normal, the new, a permanent arrangement.
Joel's reading my notes.
If, if I could comment?
Ms. Ms. Rich?
I would concur, open ended, not so much, but the, having a month to reevaluate because the tents everywhere, I mean, I picture these big restaurants maybe wanting to do that. Maybe they won't need to. They won't have the, you know, quite the problems if they can go back to square one. But I, I do think that we should, because it's an investment on their end to try to pull this off and a work product that has, they have to pull together. So I would go with a month past any, any, you know, emergency pandemic type emergency that warrants to have to even do this in the first place. So that's, I think that's fair.
Ms. President?
Ms. Rich?
This order is going beyond restaurants. It's going with, it's going with lounges. And they can everywhere move up to the, to the sidewalk and into the parking lot too. And the issue with that is prior to 1965, all of the American bars were in neighborhoods because they were not permitted to operate in a business district. And many of them are still inside neighborhoods. We don't do that anymore, but there are lots of bars inside our neighborhoods. So we're telling them, you can do just like the people downtown, you can go out on the sidewalk and, and then you can go in your parking lot and put your tent up and y'all can have some fun. This is time, this is time to expand. I think we gonna open ourselves up to trouble. And I feel like Joel and John, that we need, that we need a time certain on this business. We just, let's just, just let it be like this, just let them continue to be like this. You know, this is the new way we want them to do. Is come on out and late into the night, y'all be out there inside these neighborhoods. We're talking about over the entire city, not downtown. It's not a downtown order. This is the city of Mobile order. In every neighborhood, every district, wherever it is, where there's a bar lounge, that's what we're talking about. So we can't go out there beating up on them. So, we can't go out there beating up on them. It, it, it's just like drinking. Uh, we'll let people walk up and down the street downtown to drink. But if they catch a poor person in these neighborhoods who went to, uh, a, a, a neighborhood store and got their beer, it is in a bag, please, uh, take them and the beer to jail, but you can go downtown, run down the street with liquor in your, in the bar, and the police wave, and say, yes, sir, enjoy yourself or whatever, brother, have some fun. But you let the poor little brother, so this, we gonna come up, and we gonna run into this same stuff where we gonna be inside the neighborhood, they gonna be in the parking lot, they gonna be a- across the city sidewalk, doing just what they're doing downtown. Then they gonna come up and try to raid them and take everybody to jail. I'm not gonna stand for it. So, we need to be careful of what we're saying we are, are trying to do, because we gonna have to implement this across the board. What's fair for the goose is good, good for the gander. It's not just downtown, we're talking about citywide.
Well, well, Ms. Ms. Richson, I don't disagree with you. I don't think that what's for us, or what's been, uh, said to us was specific to downtown. I think its origin was for the entire city, and I'm not against a, uh, a month to come back and see how, uh, how its implementation is working. If we need to extend it, we'll know it. If we need to rescind it, we'll know it. But I do think if people are gonna make these investments, they've already been shut down two months or had limited curbside service. So, uh, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to give them this increased flexibility, not just downtown, because I have restaurants in other parts of district too that want this flexibility, not just downtown, but anywhere across, and, and lounges that want this flexibility, so anywhere, uh, that it could be applicable.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mancy?
Mr. Williams, then, Ms. Rich?
Yeah, I, uh, I kind of understood Mr. Daves, and I thought we were on the same note that this would be the governor's order expiration plus a month.
Right.
And, um, and I, and I think that we can come back during that time easily, and, and extend it if we like. And if Mr. Richardson has bars that he wants excluded because they'll violate noise ordinance in an orderly neighborhood, um, um, i- i- then let's exclude them. Let's make that, let's make those places known. Um, because some people, it's not gonna, it's not gonna work well, and I certainly understand him there. I, I would like to hear from the mayor here at some point to, uh, on what, what they think is practical.
So, after listening to all the conversation, you know, obviously, uh, you know how we started this off, uh, what our thoughts were, but we do not disagree with the thought of adding a month to the end of the order. And we will find out what kind of problems there are, and we can adjust to those because enforcement, you know, will reside, you know, with the administration. I, I think it's prudent to add the, uh, the month of the 30 days or whatever it would be to go after it. So, I support trying to pass it today so that they can, we can, uh, start on it and then extend it for another month.
Mr. Mancy?
You're, you're.
Okay, um, a- and thank you, Mayor, for all that. This will take, um, administrative oversight, because if they're going past a 10 by 10 tent, or it's, you know, they have to make sure the parking is taken care of, and therefore then they can spill out into a parking lot. Um, so, again, this is not a cookie cutter, because you can't do a cookie cutter because of neighborhood issues. If, if a bar or lounge backs up, we have that all over the city, not ju- not just in, in District 1. So, um, I imagine that they'll have to have their, um, program approved before they can even, you know, set out to do it. So, um, unless they're taking the letter of the law and not moving past anything that's allowed after we do this, if they want to see it a little bit bigger than, than it is, um, written, they have to get that approval from the administration. At least that's the way I understand it, and I think that will help curtail some of the problems that might crop up.
They can apply no matter what.
And so, so Flo, can you, I think, I think that she's correct in saying that, but can you answer that? You or Matt, because, I mean, Matt was, uh, part of this too.
Uh, I can say, yeah, uh, there is an application that will be on the city website. Uh, the application will be submitted to the traffic engineering department, and a site plan will be required. And I think, uh, Ms. Rich, what you're referring to on a tent, the, uh, the applicant will have to show that there's fire safety, uh, you know, and, and all the, the other, uh, uh, life safety code issues are, are all met. So, yes, there will be an application, and, and the application will be reviewed case by case.
Yeah, and, and this is Matt. I'll just add on to that, that, that the, um, the application includes, you know, a lot of things that are having, going to make us align with ABC. We don't want to get crossways with them. And, uh, and we're just trying to make sure we check all the boxes, so that the application's not gonna be some onerous process. It's intended to be something to make sure nobody gets in trouble, so we know precisely where there's gonna be the service of, of food and drink. And, uh, it's gonna be routed through traffic engineering, because they're gonna be potentially providing barricades that will delineate extended outdoor seating areas for restaurants, uh, to protect patrons, and, but also making sure that we're not, you know, getting out into intersections or things like that. You know, you have to have certain lines of sight according to the state regulations. So, we're gonna, there is gonna be considerable administrative oversight. Uh, Councilwoman Rich is, is definitely correct on that.
Uh, any further discussion, uh, relative to this particular?
Mr. President, could, could we ask, uh, Ms. Kessler? Uh, it, I, I, it seems like to me we're, we've reached a cons- a consensus that we ought to go ahead and take this up today, and that the, the, the date, the, the date under which this kind of activity is allowed would be extended to 30 days past the date on which the governor allows everything to go back to normal. If, if we could get from either Ms. Kessler or Mr. Arledge, a, uh, a revised resolution that could be put on the agenda for 10:30, so we just got a nice, clean resolution, we can go ahead and vote on it 10:30, that'd be great.
I, I totally agree, and I'd like to be, uh, listed as a sponsor of that particular resolution.
We can take the, the existing resolution is tied to the mayoral order. So, uh, on the resolution, we could add a sentence to the end of it, uh, something to the effect of, um, and we request that this, uh, policy be extended for one month after the governor's order expires. Uh, and y'all could vote on that. The, the administration, they're gonna need to amend their order though to reflect all that.
Yeah, I just, I just, I'm just trying to make sure we don't have to go through something where we amend the resolution. Resolution, we want to show up on the agenda at 10:30 is the one we want to vote on without any amendments.
Uh, Ms. President?
Ms. Richardson?
Uh, I think we need to drop the word request without begging anybody. Uh, we need to say that it, it will be extended for a month. Because, uh, they can come back and say, well, we never said we would do that. Don't, I don't think we need to use the word request that, that this, that this, uh, order would extend a month after the, the governor's expired. We just say what, what it's gonna do, and not saying we requesting about it.
Uh, Mr. Arledge, if you could work to, to achieve that language and get it out to us, it'd be appreciated.
As they, as he works on that, Flo may get with him, it may be that we want to, uh, reconsider whether it all goes to traffic engineering initially, uh, but we'll sort through that in the next few minutes, but we'll have a department that'll handle it.
Yes, sir. Uh, any, any further discussion? Ms. Vice President?
That's it, announcement?
Uh, any announcements from members of the, uh, council? Uh, anything from, uh, from your office, Mr. Man?
We're good.
Well, we see each other at 10:30. Thank you all.